Mayor, the way that we do it right now, and actually I'm familiar with Mr. Boardman's situation. What I do is I make, or we actually recommend to the city engineer that he does a lighting study in the area. We have thought about in the past maybe setting some uniform distance. The issue is that it costs a lot for those streetlights, and so really unless there's a need or a request for it, that's when city staff starts to look into it. So right now we're doing a lighting study of the area that Mr. Boardman lives in, and staff will have a recommendation probably by the next board meeting on a streetlight for that.
Could I just really ask my question? Is if you go to some division, is there a set lighting policy? Or can you have any lights? Are you have so many streets, you have sidewalks, is there any lighting?
The way it is right now, we don't have, we don't have a set criteria for lighting.
Not at all.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Seeing none, move on to the consent agenda?
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
Most of Auburn's going to accept the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Second Auburn West.
Mayor, Tom, did my, my intervene? I did want to let you know that on the consent agenda, it states the September 29th minutes. Those are actually the September 26th minutes. Just a clarification.
Additional discussion on the consent agenda? Auburn's going, would you wish to?
Amend.
Yes, any motion to amend that date?
I make a motion to amend on the September 29th to September 26th date.
Most of Auburn's going to amend the September 29th date to September 26th on the minutes. Do I have a second? Second Auburn West. Any discussion on a motion to amend the dates? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Date is amended. Back to the consent agenda and the additional discussion on the consent agenda. Seeing none, all fair consent agenda, please say aye. All opposed, same side. Next item is a proclamation, seeing no proclamations, presentations, public hearings, previous business, or new business. We'll move on to ordinances.
Bill B-11-52, first reading and ordinance amending section 340.190, emergency conditions of the City of Green Valley Municipal Code. First reading, Bill B-11-52.
Mayor Tom Alderman, today we have in front of you Brian Hunt, the Director of Public Works, who has some additional information regarding this item.
If you'd like a second. I'll be brief. Essentially this ordinance that you're looking at tonight covers the emergency snow route that the city has, and what roads are designated as emergency snow routes. The entire program is something that's evolving right now, and so I just wanted to present you with the changes in that, and that kind of goes along. Really the only thing that I need the board to consider is the ordinance, but I'll kind of let you know about some policy revisions that we have. That way you're better informed to ask, answer questions when they come up. Everybody knows the city's mission. This part really speaks to transportation and public safety, so we're always trying to make sure that we're living up to that mission, and that the programs we've put in place accomplish that mission. The current program, we have, emergency conditions exist when snow, sleet, or freezing rain cause slippery or hazardous conditions. It's not outlined, it's not definite. There's not a one hour after it starts snowing. The ordinance strictly says that two hours after these slippery conditions exist, everybody has to be off of an emergency snow route. Obviously parking on emergency snow routes is not permitted during a snow emergency. They have that two hour timeline after this, the city deems it becoming slippery. Vehicles parked on emergency snow routes during an emergency will be towed at the owner's expense. In addition, they can be ticketed. And with the program, this is looking back at last year and some of the things that we're trying to improve on, we had different phases of the snow removal that we went into. We had a phase one, that was the initial storm when it came in. That's kind of what we're changing through our procedures. And there was also four separate snow removal routes which we still are recommending that we have. The big thing was that we had no phone support for drivers, motorists, or citizens outside of normal business hours. If you called at six o'clock on Monday night, and City Hall was closed, but it was snowing, we had nobody to take calls, to screen complaints if there was a problem or a road had been skipped. So that's one of the things that we're looking at changing also. The proposed program, we're going to add 24-hour phone and radio support. We'll have one or two people on alternating 12-hour shifts. Anytime that there's a snow operation, we will have the desk down at maintenance, we'll be staffed, and they'll be taking calls. We'll also advertise that number on Channel 7, on the water bills, that sort of thing. Questions for snow removal, please call. The big thing about that is just making sure that we have people there. There's nothing more frustrating than at least for citizens, the biggest complaint is, is that there's not even anybody to call and find out, are you guys coming to do my street? Have you done my street? Why hasn't it been done? Another change that we're going to make is drivers are going to be required to report their progress, and it'll actually be written down on a log sheet by the person that's sitting in the call center. We have two-way radios, and so as they're, as they're doing the snow route, they're going to be calling these in. They won't call with every single street, but when they get an area down three or four roads, they'll call in and let the snow man know. In order to balance out the actual miles per route, the routes have been revised. Originally, we, looking at the old map, it was kind of like we just selected the main roads in different parts of the city, not really paying any attention to how many miles were in each route. So we've balanced that out to actually make all the routes very close in mileage. There's been two streets that we're removing from the emergency snow route, that Southwest Brom Drive and Long Drive. Because of the grade on both those streets, the priority has been dropped to a second Twenty streets have been added to the emergency snow route. The big issue that we had was on the south side, there were not hardly enough, comparatively, you know, how large our population center is to the south side, we didn't have that many snow routes down there compared to north. So we've added these 20 roads, and it's actually on, I've got a copy of a map here that I'm going to give you in a little bit for you guys to review and ask any questions. But those are going to be the new roads on the, in addition to the ones that we already have on the emergency snow route. So the actions to be taken is approval, the board's considering tonight the ordinance, so we're just asking for approval for the revised emergency snow route ordinance. First read tonight, second read Monday, October 24th. Installation of the emergency snow route signs, once the board does approve, or if the board approves the new ordinance, we will have to move on installing about 250 signs on those 20 roads. Public Works training on the new policy and procedures. We're going to start actually this week, doing some, some training on the equipment driving the route. We're going to have Tom here, will be working with Public Works Maintenance for equipment familiarization and inspection. And then in addition, we have to train the office staff to make sure that they're responding to the calls, and then logging the routes the way that they're supposed to be. So I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
So I had those couple, but again, I do thought, I was under the impression that snow routes the only department one side of the street, so I would like for you to check that out a little bit, because if it doesn't happen on my street, then there was no route. The thing is, if that, if that happens, removing these emergency snow routes, which was my other thought, because it was brought to me today when I was telling this what we're talking about tonight, they said, why don't we call them emergency snow route? Because it's really an emergency route, as Aaron mentioned to me one time, when we want to close our street for a Fourth of July party, as some streets they close because they're on emergency or an artery road, or whatever you want to call it, they can close down for parties, you know, or close down the street or do block parties. And we couldn't do it on our street because we're an artery road. So that was my concern, is that even though it's considered emergency snow route, we're actually considered an emergency route, because we cannot have any closing of our road. And that was when my, my street, the people around me asked me, why can't we close it? And because we live on top of a hill, and people that like to come watch Fourth of July fireworks don't live there sometimes, and they don't care how fast they appear, but we, we have our kids up there around, and you never know if somebody's going to get hurt, it's always out there screaming, but I just really do think that we need to clarify that. So that's what I ask here, asking to do.
Any additional questions for Ryan?
But with it not being the snow season, that would, we'd still get permits to do no?
We can't, that's my point, because we consider.
We can't get to close short. Well, like during the summertime, I mean, it's not going to be.
Yeah, the police department handles street closings. That was the first I heard about an emergency route this evening, but.
Something we can fix though, I mean, but during a certain time month, so it doesn't, you know, I mean.
As far as the street closure for like a block party?
Yeah, if somebody wants to have a block party, like, I mean, like between the months of, I mean, the big month is going to be July, so like August, September, maybe start in September and go all the way through May, first of.
And they kind of look at those main arterial routes, I mean, then it's like, you know, do we close Snibar for, for a party, or, you know, do we close the entrance of Rosewood or Hedgewood? One of these main streets, it's very difficult to do that, and not have a lot of issue.
One problem's going to lead to another, then.
It potentially could.
What you're saying is just.
Yeah, I mean, that's how we do it, we look at it from a safety standpoint and practicality, so if they have to use shorthorn to get, get down to Brom or wherever, another street, and that's a street shorthorn unfortunately intersects with several of the other streets, you know, that you would have to maybe divert, it could cause confusion, and that would be the issue. I'd look at it from a safety standpoint. So if the fire or us were going to a major call, and one of the busier streets was shut down, and somebody got, let's say died or something as a result of it, that would be a difficult thing to explain to somebody, because we had to block off for a, a street party. But I also understand it's not fair maybe to look at it that way, but it's just kind of one of those where you live type of situations.
I don't speak for shorthorn, because that's the street I live on, but I do think on that type of street, we ought to have parking either designated to one side or the other, on that type of street with our emergency snow route. Because we, if you look at the hills on a curve, and you go there, people park on both sides, which last year, I don't think that big truck, which is like two houses up from the Snibar, they never even, hardly removed that big truck, and it's huge. So when they park on both sides, even if it was an emergency, I don't even know if an ambulance or a big fire truck can get up to there. So it makes sense on that type of street that we designate one side the other. So that's something, I'm on the traffic issue, I think I'd perceive that, because I think it's just a mess up there. Especially once Fourth of July, because it becomes other parks, it's just a little narrow path to get through, so.
Additional questions?
And I know Kerry lives there too, and he knows how fast he's speeding up there, and somebody mentioned to me that they, that they would like to see us put a, that traffic thing up there, have, you know, some police, you know, radar out there, because right after school, and one of the guys that was at the top of the hill is a silver worker, he's one of the ones that people come out the most. So I'd really like to see something done on that radar thing. Kerry knows what I'm talking about, it just happened, we see it the other day. Thank you.
We, we adding all these because we've had problems in the past with safety, and we feel like we need to add them, is that kind of what you're shooting for?
Yeah.
For many?
For many, we want to make it, make the snow route more efficient, more effective. The goal of this was to get everybody in Green Valley within two to three blocks of an emergency snow route. We can't always, we can't be in all places all the time, but we figure if we can get the emergency snow route at least close enough to where they just have to travel a few blocks if it is a bad storm, and we're not able to get to the secondary priorities, their chances of getting out to the main road are a lot better if it's two or three blocks away, rather than, I mean, we had huge spots down in the, down in the farms, where you, you know, had 10 or 12 blocks that weren't, didn't have any emergency snow routes in them. So we're trying to kind of close up those gaps.
Excellent. I move that we accept Bill number B-11-52 for its first reading, bring it back for time only.
Most of Auburn's going to approve Bill 11-52 for its first reading, bring it back by time only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Auburn Schaefer. Any additional discussions?
Mayor Tom, I might just add one thing. I'd like to thank Tom Chamberlain for all of his work on this project. He's done outstanding job of putting together a good, efficient plan.
Seeing none, all therapists say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side.
Ms. Bebe, did you vote?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Four zero, first. Just first reading, I need to go.
Bill B-11-53, first reading and ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, delivery of $5.235 million principal amount of general obligation bond, series 2011, City of Green Valley, Missouri, and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. First reading, Bill B-11-53.
I move that we accept Bill B-11-53 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by time only.
I motion Auburn West to approve Bill 11-53 for its first reading, bring it back by time only for its second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second Auburn Schaefer. Any discussion on the motion?
Point of clarification, Mayor. Bill B-11-53 and B-11-55 are both included in item B-11-54, and yet the one that we just read is up for its first reading only, and the next two are up for the first and second readings. Is there a reason for that?
Yes, there is, and we can speak to that item. Tonight, under B-11-53, these are the general obligation bonds, if we were to put these in a little different order, I probably would have preferred to put B-11-54 in front of you first, as this was for the agreement with Piper Jaffery for the underwriting services that in turn affects B-11-53 and, yes, and 55 as well. So as a point of order for this evening, the two items, and as we get to those, actually as our representatives come forward and talk, they'll be talking about all three of these, and how they all kind of intermix and touch one another. The B-11-54 for Piper Jaffery for the underwriting services is the one that we really need to put in front of the board tonight, look for first and second reading and have it approved this evening, so that we can continue on with the bond writing and services. So, and then B-11-55 is also the refunding of a bond that we hope to, for the board to consider this evening, as we hope that through acting on this in a somewhat quick manner, we can recognize some additional cost savings to the city by doing this refunding. And then B-11-53, as this is a general obligation bond, does not have to be approved as quickly, and so it has time to go through the process. So, kind of in a roundabout way to get you there, a delivery for reading only.
Is there?
We have Tom Calico here from Springstead, as well as Ty Doffey with Piper Jaffery, and Dave Martin from Gilmoreville, who is bond counsel on these items. Tom?
Mayor, board members, good to be back, wish you again this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to make some comments, particularly about the general obligation bonds. We haven't had much opportunity to talk about these, they've been mentioned previously, and as we've talked about, the whole tax increment financing and interchange improvement projects, but we haven't really zeroed in on it. So it's good that we have a chance to talk about it some this evening. These are about $5.2 million in general obligation bonds. This is the remaining authority from your 2007 bond referendum.
Tom, before you go on any further, I don't think your microphone's working. Jamie, is there any secret to that?
Should we turn on a third number showing there?
Hey, here it comes. There we go. All right. Is that, is that better?
There you go.
Okay, I'm just going to hold it closer, I think that's the problem. Okay, this is, this is about $5.2 million in general obligation bonds. This is the remaining authority from your 2007 bond referendum. The funds from these bonds will be used, they're part of the overall funding package for the interchange, related improvements of the interchange, the North Attle Road, the realignment of Highway 40. Principally, these funds will, will go towards right-of-way acquisition and actual construction. Now, the plan, for those of you who remember, when we went through the tax increment financing, creation of the tax increment financing district, you may remember that the plan is that ultimately these improvements will be funded from projects 1, 3, and 4 in the tax increment financing district. But since those districts are not active right now, the plan is to send, to sell these general obligation bonds to front the costs, and then ultimately they get paid back from the tax increment financing district. Now exactly when that will happen, and whether there will be enough increment to pay it back, is really kind of unknown at this time, and that's something that we talked about as one of the risks when we talked about the, setting up the tax increment financing district. These are general obligation bonds, so they are backed by the full faith and credit of the, of the city, which means that the city has the obligation to, you know, to levy whatever tax rate is necessary in order to, to pay the bonds back. Now, Jamie's just handed out to you a page that looks like this one, and I gave, I wanted you to see this because I think, I'm a more visual thinker, you, a lot of people are, and it's, so you have it a couple ways, you have a graph, you have a table that kind of illustrates how the debt on these bonds will layer in with your existing debt. And you can see what's happened, the blue on your graph is the existing debt, and you can see that basically from now through 2019, we have a bit of a peak. And in order to manage the, the tax levy, these bonds are structured as what's called capital appreciation bonds. And you can see that the, both the principal and interest on these bonds comes due in years 2020 through 2031. And that was done, as they say, specifically to manage the levy. Now, capital appreciation bonds are a little bit out of the ordinary in, in the municipal bond market. They're not, not stranger, but they're the minority of structures. As a result, whereas typically on a general obligation bond, as the city's financial advisor, we would recommend a competitive sale, where you basically take bids with the lowest interest rate winning. Because of the somewhat unusual nature of the structure of these bonds, we have recommended to you that you build a negotiated sale. And a negotiated sale, you basically, you go through a competitive selection process, typically select a, an underwriter, and then negotiate the sale with them. Now, in this particular case, our recommendation to you was to select Piper Jaffery. And the reasoning for this was that Piper Jaffery has previously been selected through a competitive process to handle the tax increment financing bonds and the neighborhood improvement district bonds, two other pieces of the whole tax increment financing package. And so it made sense to us, and it hopefully makes sense to you, to use Piper Jaffery again for this piece, because it's part of a larger puzzle, and, and the thought is that having that continuity makes a lot of sense. And, you know, as opposed to if we bring in yet another underwriter, now we've got two underwriters working within, you know, kind of under the, under the broad roof, if you will, of a larger transaction. So, and we can, we can talk some more about that if you'd like, I know that, you know, because of the way the agenda was set up, the actual approval of the underwriting agreement with Piper Jaffery is actually the next item. The plan is to sell these general obligation bonds the week of November 7th. We'll see kind of how it goes as far as the exact date we determine kind of how the market The, we are planning on seeking a rating from Standard Empores. As you may recall, the city's current general obligation rating, a very good rating at AA- minus, was just reaffirmed here recently through what Standard Empores calls their surveillance process. We will attempt to get a 10-year optional call on these bonds. What that means is, is the city would have the, as the name implies, the city would have the option at 10 years to, to basically call, pay off, some or all are part of the bonds. All are part of the bonds. We, we want to go with that, because as you can see from the handout I gave you, you know, we've kind of locked, you're locked into a fairly, you know, tight structure there. And we'd like to give you some flexibility, so that if things improved, like if, for example, assessed valuations were to grow faster than what we're currently projecting, and you wanted to refinance this to standard serial bonds, where basically, you know, you're, you're paying off a bit of the principal as you go, you would have that option. So we're going to pursue that. Now, they may come at a cost, because capital appreciation bonds typically don't have a call feature, and so we've put something in, in the bond ordinance that says essentially we're going to pursue that, and if we can get it done for basically less than half a percent in, in interest cost, then we'll do it. But if it ends up being more expensive than that, then we, then we won't pursue it. So your action this evening is to consider the first reading of the bond ordinance. Bond ordinance basically sets out the terms and characteristics of the bond issue, sets out the maximum bond amount, which in this case is $5,235,000, the maximum term of the bonds, which is 2031, the maximum true interest cost, which we set at 5%, although we expect in the current market to do better than that. And then I just talked about the optional call feature. The second reading will occur on October 24th, after which time then staff will be authorized to proceed with the sale and conduct it within the parameters that are in, in the ordinance. Any questions on the general obligation bonds?
Any questions?
We set the, in the parameters of the ordinance, we've set the maximum interest rate at 5%, although I think we're currently estimating, let's see, we're currently estimating, in the current market, about 4.3%. So we believe we can achieve. But that may, that may change depending on market conditions between now and when we actually conduct the sale.
Since Mr. Calico's on a roll, is it all right with the board if he continues to talk about all these three items since they're so interconnected? And then you can go back and just take extra reference.
Okay. Got to change notebooks. So I believe the next item on your agenda is the underwriting agreement with Piper Jaffery. This is for two issues, the, both the general obligation bonds, and then the refunding revenue bonds that we'll talk about in a moment. These are, just real quickly, the refunding revenue bonds are refunding for interest cost savings of the city's 2001 water and sewer revenue bonds. We, we conducted a competitive selection for the utility revenue bonds. Some of you may recall that we had done a competitive selection for the tax increment financing revenue bonds. And it made sense at the time, rather than starting from scratch, since we had had a selection, I believe we had, memory serves, we had six responses for the tax increment financing revenue bonds, responses from six underwriters. So what we said was, let's, let's just, since this is again for a revenue band, revenue bond type transaction, rather than start all over again, let's, let's take, because we had done, you know, the first selection had been on, you know, on, looked very comprehensively at both the abilities of the firm as well as price, we said, well, let's, let's pick the top three, what we felt were the top three finishers out of that tax increment financing revenue bond request for proposals. And then we'll do a simple, you know, we've already, you know, we've already basically reviewed those three, felt that they were all qualified firms, so we sent them a very short request for proposal, basically asking, give us a price for doing these refunding revenue bonds. And we sent that to, like I said, the top three, top three finishers, in no particular order, from the TIF revenue bonds were Oppenheimer and Company, Piper Jaffery, and Stiefel Nicholas. We, we got proposals from both Piper Jaffery and Oppenheimer, Stiefel declined to respond. And we asked them to bid basically on either an investment-grade transaction or a non-rated transaction. transaction. I'm going to refer to the investment grade transaction because that's what we're going to be doing. Piper Jaffray bid $5.40 per $1,000 of bonds, Oppenheimer was $8.50 per $1,000 of bonds. So, we went, our recommendation to you was Piper Jaffray. As I talked about a moment ago on the general obligation bonds, our recommendation is to stay with Piper Jaffray because they are also doing the other pieces of the whole tax increment financing, financing. Any questions on the underwriter agreement?
Two questions on that.
Okay, oh, I am on a roll then. All right. Moving on then to the water and sewer refunding revenue bonds. We've talked about this transaction quite a bit, we, this has been talked about actually for about a year now, at various points, so I think this is familiar to everybody. We have an opportunity with the 2001 water and sewer revenue bonds to refund them for interest cost savings, we basically can essentially refinance them at a lower interest rate. The plan here is, you know, we're not extending the term of the debt, the term of the debt, you know, the maturity will stay the same. These, it's about $4.3 million. We're refunding the original, well, the original issue is about $5.7 million, there's about $4.6 million outstanding. These are true revenue bonds, they're backed solely by the water and wastewater revenues, there's, these are not a, there's no general obligation or full faith and credit pledge associated, these are solely revenue bonds. I've also given you a handout on this one, it looks like, this one doesn't, this one that has no color. And we've looked at a couple of slightly different structures, and your staff has a recommendation as to which one they think is, is, is the best. Basically, we took a look at the outstanding debt of the utility, which consists of, currently of the 2001 bonds, there's another set of bonds that were issued in 2004, and then while not technically debt, you do have a commitment with the city of Blue Springs to make payments to them for capacity in the Steibar Treatment Plant, which, while technically, from an accounting standpoint, is not considered debt, feels and looks a lot like debt, so we've incorporated into our analysis here. If you look at that topmost table, what you see is, in column A there, that's the current debt of the utility. And then, the next one, column B, is what that debt would look like if we refunded the 2001s strictly for interest cost savings. So, basically, leave the principal amortization, how fast we pay down the principal, and in what amounts, we leave that basically the same. And you can see that the impact, particularly in those years, 2012 through 2019, we have this sort of bumpy, bumpy debt payment schedule, kind of up and down, which makes it kind of hard from a utility standpoint to plan for rates. So, the next column, column C, is one where we take a slightly different twist, we look at, okay, how could we refund this also for interest cost savings? But in addition, could we do some things with this to smooth out that, that debt structure for the utility? And you can see that we can, we essentially get it, we kind of build up to a plateau in, in 2013, kind of hold that steady through 2020, and then we see the debt starts to descend. Now, there's slightly different savings associated with these. If you go to the next, the middlemost table on your, on your handout, you'll see, it shows the difference, the old net debt service, DS's debt service, the new net debt service, and this, and the difference there. And then off to the right, it tells you what the, the net present value savings, so of the net present value savings, of the interest cost savings only, no smoothing, just, just refunding for interest cost savings, it's about $444,000 is, is the interest cost savings after the payment of any fees associated with the transaction. That's about 9% present value benefit of the refunded debt service. Keep in mind, I told you before, basically, we suggest kind of benchmark 3% as the minimum that you like for refunding, so well above, well above the minimum. Now, looking at it, if we did it, the savings both, or did the refunding both for interest cost savings and debt service smoothing, you can see we have a slightly lower net present value savings, about $402,000, and 8.29% of present value savings of debt service. The staff's recommendation, which we concur with, is to go with the, that, that options, the one that's column C in your, in your handout, the debt service smoothing as well as the interest cost savings, mostly because it will be easier for your, your utility rate payers, it'll make, you'll have less variation that you'll have to have in your, in your, in your rates, so we think it's advantageous. We are also suggesting a negotiated sale on this transaction for the reasons that the utility, the city's utility is not a frequent issuer, you're not, you're not in the market, not well-known by the market, and for that reason, we think it will be better served through a negotiated sale where you can get a little more intensive work by your underwriter to bring the transaction to potential purchasers. The plan is to sell the week of October 24th. We've actually already received a rating on this transaction, this is the first rating that your utility has ever received, and received a very good rating, an A-plus rating from Standard and Poor's. So, the action this evening is, we're suggesting first and second reading, and the reason that, for that is essentially, this is all about interest cost savings, we're trying to hit the market at the best possible time, and right now, rates are very good. The other think, thinking was that this is a transaction we've talked about for some time, and we knew you were familiar with it, but that was the thinking on, on the first and second reading. The, what you have is a, a parameters bond ordinance, which sets again the parameters, the maximum bond amount permitted would be 4.7 million, maximum term of the bonds, which is the current maturity of 2020, the maximum true interest cost would be 3.25% with an optional call no later than 2019. The bond ordinance again sets out various terms and conditions of the bonds. A couple of things that are noteworthy in it, it does call for a debt service reserve fund, just as you have with your, currently with the 2001 bonds and also with the 2004, it would be basically funded, you bring forth basically funds from the prior issue debt service reserve to fund the new one. It has, like all utility revenue bonds, has what's called a rate, a rate covenant, which essentially is a covenant by the city to, to maintain the rates such that after paying the cost of operating the utility, you have 110% of the debts, of your debt service payment, gives you a little bit of extra cushion. So, that's what, that's been in your 2001 and your 2004, and it's continued on here. Really, this ordinance, I would tell you, is patterned exactly after your 2001 and your 2004 ordinance. It has an additional bonds test of 110%, again, after paying the operating costs, you've got to have revenues equal 110% of any additional debt that you're taking on plus your, your existing debt. And it has the typical requirements to insure and operate the system in a professional That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go back up to Bill 11-53 then, if you have a first and a second ordinance. Do we have any additional discussion on that one?
First one, 53.
11-53.
I'll read the second on it.
That's, we, we have, that's just one read, we have a first and a second motion, so we'll just do that for the first read tonight. Do we have any additional discussion on that one? Okay. All in favor of a motion to approve Bill 11-53 for its first reading, please say aye. All pose the same sign.
4-0, first, Mayor. Bill B-11-54, first reading, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Piper Jaffray for the underwriting services for the combined waterworks and sewerage system refunding revenue bonds and the general obligation bonds. First reading, Bill B-11-54.
I move that we accept Bill B-11-54 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
A motion of Alvin West to approve Bill 11-54 for its first reading, bring it back by title for its second reading, do I have a second?
Second.
Second order, BB. Any discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign.
4-0, first, second reading, Bill B-11-54, it will be ordinance 2175.
I move that we accept Bill B-11-54 for its second reading and making it ordinance number 2175.
I have a motion of Alvin West to approve Bill 11-54 for its second reading, making ordinance 2175. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second order, BB. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign. BB?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
5-0, Mayor. Bill B-11-55, first reading, and ordinance authorizing the issuance of point, or $4.390 million, principal amount of combined waterworks and sewerage system refunding revenue bonds series 2011, City of Grand Valley, Missouri, and authorizing certain actions and documents and prescribing other matters relating thereto. First reading, Bill B-11-55.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill number B-11-55 for its first reading and bring it back for its second reading by title only.
I have a motion of Alvin BB to accept Bill 11-55 for its first reading, bring it back by title for its second reading, do I have a second?
I have a question.
Second, Alvin Schaefer.
Okay, on this, it reads, series for 2011, and then the ordinance authorizing the refunding, so these are the bonds that were made in 2001 that we are bringing back for us, see, that's a little confusing. Or was it a misprint? Do you see it where I'm looking?
Yeah, actually, these are both 2011 issues because they're going to be done this year. And Mr. Calico just explained to us how the refunding is actually 2001 and 2000...
2001. Just the 2001. Yeah. No, I'm sorry, I was like...
Alvin Totten, I, I think this is the answer to your question, there are 2011 bonds that are refunding the bonds that were issued in 2001.
Okay.
Does that, does that help?
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure because when I was reading it, it just caught me as the difference, and I want to make sure I'm understanding what I'm doing.
Any additional discussion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign.
5-0, first, second reading, Bill B-11-55, it will be ordinance 2176. An ordinance authorizing the issuance of $4.390 million, principal amount of combined waterworks and sewerage system refunding revenue bonds series 2011, City of Grand Valley, Missouri, and authorizing certain actions and documents and prescribing other matters relating thereto. Second reading, ordinance 2176.
Mayor, I move that we accept Bill number B-11-55 for its second reading, making it ordinance number 2176.
I have a motion of Alvin BB to accept Bill 11-55 for its second reading, making ordinance 2176. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alvin Totten. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign. BB?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
Totten?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
5-0, Mayor. That's all the ordinance resolutions there.
Our next item is resolutions, seeing none, move on to removal of table items if so desired. Right now on the table, we have Resolutions R-11-21, which is a resolution concerning the HERP. We have table that on the table.
Mayor Todd, if I could intervene here for just a moment, the, this item, we had hoped to have a handout for everybody tonight that showed the newly revised HERP, unfortunately, we're having some technical difficulties, so we will be providing that to you here in the next day or so, but please know that that will be on the October 24th agenda.
Next then is item on tables, Bill B-11-45, which was ordinance authorizing the purchase of a several-later work truck, that's still probably on there.
Mr. Mayor, I would also like to inform you and the board that it is staff's recommendation to permanently table this item and pull it from the agenda. Pull, did you say pull it from the agenda? Please. Yes.
I want to entertain a motion then to permanently remove Bill 11-45 from the table, thus killing it. Okay, I got a motion of Alvin BB to remove 11-45 from the table, did not bring it back up. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alvin Totten. Any discussion on the motion to remove Bill 11-45 from the table and not pursuing it Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose the same sign. All right, that one was gone. Next up then on the table is Bill B-11-51, which was the ordinance of, indeed, chapter 240, section 240 dot 140, pertaining animals in the parks, we're still wondering on that one.
No, actually, Mayor and Board, I would like to present to you this evening to introduce a first read on this item, actually, additional information has come from Director Davies about this, and I believe you have that information in your packet.
I have a motion to remove Bill 11-51 from the table. Okay, I got a motion of Alvin West to remove Bill 11-51 from the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alvin Totten. Any discussion on removing it from the table?
I have one to clarify, Mayor, if I may. I know we discussed this in the past, you know, I, I still do strongly feel that if we could put up a sign by the two playgrounds that have an enclosure around those two, stating that the animals are not allowed in that particular area, we, we have the animals on leash, but we can't have, we can't have leashes on the children that play in those playgrounds, and children are automatically attracted to animals. I would really like to see a sign stating on, at those two areas that animals were not allowed in that. I realize that it would be difficult to patrol that area in any way, shape, or form, but at least maybe if signage is there, that will prompt pet owners to stay out of that area.
And we, we do have several other parks that do have playgrounds in them that are aren't quite as clearly defined with the border timbers that you have out here, and that's something we can, we can definitely try to work through. I, I, I think again, one of the biggest issues is kind of defining the boundaries of a playground, and...
There is a boundary around those two.
In, in the two here.
Armstrong.
And, and they're just referring to Armstrong Park only?
Yes.
Not, not in any other playgrounds, any of the other parks?
If I want to do it to all of them, I mean, that is...
Well, and that's, and that's what I wanted to make clear because the play, a lot of the playgrounds in our other parks don't have the defined borders like these two do, especially the two out at Monkey Mountain Park, and we've got some in our, our neighborhood parks as well, so, and, and they're not quite set up the same as well, so, so some of the bigger difficulties with that is also the definition of what constitutes a playground or a play area or a green space, all of which, you know, can contain kids. But, but I don't, we don't have any issue with, with at least getting signage up there.
I would appreciate that, I think that would be...
If I, if I may interject to discuss this issue further, it does need you to remove it from the table to discuss the issue, we can do that during the first reading.
Do you have any trouble with the other parks?
Nancy, we need to, I brought it on table first. Okay, any discussion on removing it from the table? Were we talking... Or we talked about the action ordinance. Any further?
That's why I wanted to know if we had trouble with the other two parks, if there wasn't any trouble having a problem removing it from the table.
Generally, for the most part, we, we haven't had, I, well, not only at playgrounds, but in general in our parks with, with dog bites. We've had, you know, uh, two or three over the last five years, if minimal.
Okay, see no additional discussion, uh, all fair, remove from table, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Okay, remove from table.
Back on first read. First reading, Bill B eleven dash fifty-one, and ordinance amending chapter two forty, section two forty point one four zero, code ordinance to City of Green Valley, Missouri pertaining to animals in parks. First reading, Bill B eleven dash fifty-one.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to interject a question here to our counselor, Mr. Cook. My question for you is, after hearing the prior discussion regarding this item, I've been being concerned that we want to place signs around the playground areas. Would it be your recommendation to add that type of language within the body of the ordinance? Or is it adequate enough to just place signage around those areas? My concern is, is if you just place signage around those areas without having it within your ordinances, you may have a conflict there. Individuals may come in and say, "Well, it doesn't say here that I can't have my animals in a playground area." And so, my thought is, and I hate to do this to Shannon one more time, but it is under section, uh, subsection B, where it says, "Notwithstanding subsection A above, no dogs or cats shall be allowed on and within the immediate vicinity of any athletic sports field." Or you could add playground area and, uh, unless such animals are transvestite or with persons with disabilities. I hate, I know, I, uh...
Well...
That's why I'm asking for your opinion on that.
Well, the way I read this is we've redone it, revised it, there are no, there are no dogs, cats, or animals allowed in these parks, period. According to this ordinance, that's what it says.
Right.
Right.
So you don't need to worry about the signage because there's not going to be anybody there.
Right, but in this situation, uh, some of the aldermen have expressed concern about having animals in a playground area. Are you telling me that you think that within this, uh, description here, that that includes playground areas?
The playground is within the park, it is.
Right, right now, as, as the, the proposed ordinance reads, is animals are prohibited, period, around our athletic fields. You know, on the athletic fields and in the immediate vicinity. Main reasons being is because of the high dense group of people that are, are in this area, uh, animals impacting, uh, play. You've got kids running around and people screaming and yelling at the, at the, the games and, and, um... Our experience with this is that, uh, I, I think the two or three animal bites we have had have been at our athletic fields. And you've got certain food being served and, and so forth and so on. So the, uh, environment there isn't really conducive to animals, period. Now, however, outside the athletic fields, and Armstrong Park has two athletic fields, but it also has two playgrounds or shelters, skate park. Outside the athletic fields and surrounding area, animals are allowed as long as they're tethered and under control by their owner. So I think what, what Alderman West has been pointing to is that to not have animals near our ballfields, but also to not have animals in the boundaries of our playgrounds that are within these parks.
Well, that, he's, he's really kind of just demonstrated the ambiguity of the ordinance. Because if anybody reads it, they're not going to know what it means. So to answer your question directly, yes, there should be language about signage, and I would further recommend that we revise section B because we, we should recognize that enforcement and regulation is going to be virtually impossible when you start talking about, within the facility boundaries and the immediate surrounding area. One is going to have trouble knowing where you can have an animal, even on a leash.
Well, and I think the intent of the park board was that generally our, our entrances and exits to our parks are, are pretty controlled by fencing. And we, in essence, had signage up with an aerial view of the ballpark, and then everything in red denotes that this is where animals are prohibited. Now granted, you know, how, how well is that going to work, you know, that's, that's yet to be determined. I, I think it was the intent of the park board, though, to prohibit animals in those areas because of the, the reasons I had mentioned earlier. But again, the more you start picking and choosing different areas within a park, I think the more confusing it's going to be to the park user, but also to, and law enforcement officials to try to enforce it. And, uh, we've got kids all over our parks. We can have a shelter with thirty kids in it at a birthday party. You know, we could have twenty kids in a green spa, space, you know, playing flag football. You know, just this afternoon, we had fifteen kids on our skate park. So, I, I think the more we start picking different park and recommendations to say where we can have them at all, but over here, we can't have them as long as they're leashed and under control, the more confusing it's going to be. And I think that the goal of the park board was to just limit it to the athletic fields where we've had problems in the past. Everywhere else in park property and on trails, they are leased and under control by the owner.
And that's the way it's written currently?
Yes.
Is there a problem with having just possibly the, uh, over here that we just opened, the trail, uh, by the pond, to have it over there, have it where it's available because there shouldn't be that many kids running through? And I hope no one parent would send their children over by the pond unattended. That, uh, maybe that could be basically the place to take the dogs for a walk? Is that an issue? Could that be, so then there would be no doubt in anyone's mind? You know, they're not coming to Armstrong Park, they're not going to Monkey Mountain. This goes out of the way, and I don't think very many people could stay with their dogs in a park more than thirty, forty minutes anyway, so... Wouldn't that be an issue?
Generally correct, and I think that was one of the other reasons that we, we were trying to deter animals from our, our athletic fields because generally people will come there and stay there from an hour and a half to three to three and a half hours.
Right.
Uh, and as you can see at the ribbon cutting we had a couple of weeks ago, I think we had three or four people in attendance that had animals that, that were, were on a leash. We, we see animals, uh, obviously on our new trail, but also in our parks. Our Trail's master plan shows that we want to be able to start connecting our trails to parks. So one of the things that we have to look at long term is, is if, if we have trails that are allowing animals connecting to parks that don't, or portions of parks that don't, then we'll run into, into some more problems. But I, I think, um, myself, staff would tell you that we probably do see animals, um, in our parks as much as we do out on, on the trail. And for the most part, they are, are leased and under control, but every now and then you will have an animal loose.
Well, I was just trying to make it one place and then that way to make it a whole lot easier, both to, uh, supervise and, uh, less opportunity for children because there's no, uh, gangs in that. And I just figured maybe that would be a good place to put it.
So Nancy, you're...
But that's not the issue that Shannon and Alexa asked. Let me ask you this, if I take, if I go to the ballpark, um, it says, "Any athletic field located within a park." So I can't be in, within the facility boundaries and the immediate surrounding area of any athletic field. So what does that really mean? If I, if I want to go to a ballgame, do I know that when I go in there, it's fenced and I know that's the boundary? I can't go in there, period?
And, yeah, and we are currently, it's, it wouldn't be completely fenced. None of our athletic fields would be completely, completely fenced to where a, uh, a dog owner would be able to see fencing and know that those are the boundaries.
So how am I going to know, even, even with signage, that it's okay to be here with the dog on a leash and not okay to be over here on the ballfield? I'm just playing the devil's advocate.
No.
I think we can draft it, but, uh, I see what Alexa's saying, uh, about trying, because the public is not going to know where the boundary starts and stops, unless it's fenced. If it's fenced, it's easy.
Right, right.
That's why I figured just one dog park right over here, it, it would be no confusion.
Well, that's, that's another issue, that's the legislature, I don't want to get into that one. I've got no problems with the word "it" on this one.
Well, you would have this one.
Does someone want to make a motion to approve it? We haven't, we haven't even made the first one yet. It's off the table.
I think we better put it back on the table.
But no one has, well, I mean...
Yeah, put it back on the table.
What I could recommend is that, um, instead of putting items back on the table, I'd like to recommend to the board to, uh, pick a date that you want it back in front of you. Unless you want to permanently table and leave it to the discretion of staff to bring it to you when they believe that it's ready. So at this point, I would like to recommend to you to consider, uh, tabling it until October twenty-fourth. That's two weeks, that should allow us enough time to work with our city attorney and, uh, bring some additional language to this, uh, item that I, I think we're all hearing that you want to see. I think that's a good idea.
So you're making a motion to table until October twenty-fourth?
I'm making a motion to move it to October twenty-fourth.
Okay.
For discussion.
Yeah, motion Alderman Beebe to table Bill eleven fifty-one until October twenty-fourth, bring it back on agenda that evening after staff has had a chance to go through it. Do I have a second? Second, Alderman West. Any discussion on the motion to table till the twenty-fourth? Seeing none, all fair, please say aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Alright.
I want to, uh, say that Shannon, um, I'll take some of the responsibility for the bad language because I wrote it. Shannon, that got with me, he had examples. We thought we had it figured out, didn't we? So, we'll get it figured out.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, next item then is city attorney's report.
Nothing to report, Your Honor. Staff reports.
At this time, Chief Hooper has an introduction to make.
Yep. Uh, Mayor, Board, I'd like to introduce, uh, Dave Starbuck here. Dave is our newest part-time employee with the police department. He's going to be heading our prime prevention program. We're very fortunate to have Dave on board. He's coming with twenty-nine years' experience with the Kansas City Police Department. Um, the majority of those years, he worked in the drug and gang unit, actually started his first gang unit in Kansas City, he'd be... Just brings a wealth of knowledge, a wealth of resources, contacts. We're very excited to have him on board. He started last Tuesday, already impressed a lot of us. He's just jumping in and grabbing things. Some of the things he'll be taking over is our BIS, which is our volunteers and police services, citizens academy, uh, neighborhood and business watch programs, and various other things that we're going to get going, um, onto the department here that we already have going and that we're going to continue with and kind of let him take the ball on with him, which he's already done. So we just want to welcome him, and, and I'm sure you guys will all get to know him, and, uh, not a very shy person, so feel free to contact him, and I'm sure he'll probably contact with any of you, so, thank you very much.
Other items that we have on staff report, Shannon, do you have anything? Kathy?
Nothing.
Right, okay. I have a few items myself. In front of you tonight, you have the report in the NPR conference that Shannon Davies, Jamie, and I self attended. If you have any questions regarding the attendance at that conference, please do let one of us know, we'd be happy to share additional information with you about that item. Also, uh, on your desk, you should have a memo that's outlining some additional items, uh, that have been brought to our attention and required clarification from the employee handbook. Those items, uh, will be brought to you via the ordinance at the next agenda on October twenty-fourth. And if you have any questions about those items, please let us know about those as well. We just want to get those in front of you in writing. I would like to suggest to the, um, board, on the front of your agenda, um, you have items one, two, three, and four. We have a call to order, the roll call, the invocation, and the pledge. I'm going to be inserting another item in that area that's going to, uh, add approval of the agenda. And what that will allow us to do is make changes within the agenda that are set in front of you at that time. For example, uh, today we knew that we wanted to pull some of those table items, we knew that there were some other things that we wanted to be able to do. The clarification that we needed to make on the consent agenda. We can make those clarifications at that time, then you can approve the revised agenda. They're typically clerical in nature, but it just makes it global easier so that you're not having to make so many motions at that time. Mr. Cook, this is kind of a surprise for you, are you okay with that process?
You're the expert. Procedure way, that's good.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, the last thing that I have for you tonight is to ask for a little bit of lenience as we start playing with, uh, some of the structure in the room. Uh, you're going to see the tables moved around at the next hearing, not that that's the way it's going to be permanently, but I'm going to try to get all the directors, uh, to the table so that we're, they're not out in the audience. And if there's any questions that you have, um, they'll be up here at the table with the microphones to be able to answer those so that everyone can hear. And it means the tables are going to be, uh, probably turned a little bit at an angle, not where our backs are completely to the crowd. We'll have more of a profile to them so that they're still included. If, we'll probably try that a session or two. If that doesn't work, we're, we'll go to Plan B and see, and see how those end up, uh, working so that we can get everybody to the tables. My point is to try to do it without, uh, spending any more additional city dollars for furniture. And, uh, I think, I think we can get it done, but it'll take working with it just a little bit to see how it functions.
I appreciate not having to back to him because I've been talking for a long time.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, next item is, uh, Board of Alderman reports some comments, Alderman Schaefer.
Yeah, uh, thanks to Ryan and Tom. For about two, two and a half years, I've been bugging about a sidewalk over there off of Ryan. All I could ever get done was we can't, we can't, we can't, we can't. And, uh, Tom and Ryan put together, and the last numbers I've seen were really, really good up here. I appreciate it, and all the neighbors in, in the area down there that have been wanting that for quite a while. You know, I was hoping for some of them to come in and say thanks, but appreciate it. They've done a real good job of getting it done, and getting it done really had a good try, so, that's all I... Still not done with it yet, but that's, that's... That's all I got, Mayor.
Alderman Totten?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman Scully?
Nothing at this time.
Alderman West?
I do want to thank Shannon for all your efforts on, on this dog park.
Alderman Beebe?
I had a couple of them. Erin, I didn't hear Dave's last name, so could you tell me his last name?
Yeah, Dave Starbuck.
Starbuck.
Yeah, not Starbucks. Without the S. He wishes.
Thank you. There was a train, I believe, on the track this week for like over forty-five minutes, were you aware of that?
Yes.
It was blocked out in a grove, I know that. It was blocked on my subdivision.
Yeah, it was blocked here for a long time. And one time we were going to talk to them and say about getting that where they weren't blocked, so one day just an emergency, I don't know how bad that situation is. It's been brought up several times. I just don't know if there was an emergency at the end of the day. I think that was Friday that that happened, Friday afternoon.
You know, and I, and I went through town, and I noticed that it was split apart when I came through. They had cars on either side, they actually had the road opened up. I mean, the time I came through, I noticed the cars were there for several hours. I went through yesterday and then came back through and they were gone. But, um, I did not hear anything about that, and I can tell you, we generally get calls about that if they're blocking it for any period of time, and I can't remember the last time that we received a call. So that, to me, has been, that's pretty out of the ordinary for the last several years. I remember there was a period of time, probably seven, eight years ago, where it seemed to be very problematic, and we had many discussions with the railroad on it, which kind of led to nowhere. I mean, we're kind of, hey, what we're doing, I mean, just the way it is, but they were, they were going to make an effort to get them...
This was the second time this year, the first time there was a problem with the engine, which was very, I was out detail, doing the traffic. Um, this time, it was down for about forty-five minutes, and then they had to come down and split it because in order to get to the Dollar General, we had to go all the way up and around to come out of the other Casey's. But they were, they were doing something, and I know that they had machinery on the tracks even today. So I don't know if there was something wrong with the track.
Yeah, that's what I just wanted, because everybody was asking me about it. Uh, second thing, uh, Erin.
Yes, ma'am.
Steve, I might ask you, on Ryan Road, uh, I've had numerous complaints about the school bus drivers.
Okay.
Numerous, and this isn't just kind of the ones, I just kind of let it go. But the only thing I could tell them to do is perhaps give a school bus a number, which is if you're looking back in your rearview mirror, it's... as far at the bottom, in front of the bus, on the black bumper. So that's as far as I know, but it seems like it's a recurring effect for people that live on Ryan Road, is what I've been told.
Is that a speeding issue, is that what you're?
Speeding, well, when they pull out, the buses get right behind it and always just go close to their vehicle.
We just actually attended their annual training prior to the school year starting up. We were invited by Sean, we were asked by Sean Bray if we'd be willing to attend their, they have an annual kind of training about safety and stuff like that with the bus drivers, which we did attend. Darren Chan and Mike Amis both went to that meeting and kind of went over issues with safety, you know, that we see and we've noticed and stuff, but I will, I can address that.
I appreciate it.
With the school's transportation director, Sean Bray.
Thank you. And Shannon, I have a question for you. On the benches, I know when we did the ribbon cutting last week, they talked, we all took a tour around the walking trail. And they mentioned there'll be benches there, place period, you know, park, park, and wherever. Do they do a program where the park can rent those? Or is it an option where somebody could donate that in memory of somebody? I know Ms. Franklin is very popular on that.
Yeah, yeah, we will have an adopt a bench program as well as adopt a tree program specifically for trails. And those two policies are actually already in place. At our next park board meeting, they're actually going to be taking a look at the different options for our benches and the style, design, and then figuring out which theme we're going to go with. Because in essence, what we start with there will be the recurring pattern and theme of our benches throughout the whole trail system as it gets constructed. Based off of that information, we'll then be able to pull together the costs of that bench, and then we can plug that number into our adopt a bench program and put it out for advertisement.
Well, somebody mentioned it when I said the ribbon cutting. I saw that, and I know we had talked about it in the past, and that was something you had said that you were looking into, but I just want to verify that. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Next item is Mayor's report. First thing, I just want to thank Ryan Hunt for his service when he was acting city administrator between Mark and Alexa. Appreciate that, and I think you're, you know, you did a great job and, you know, we were in capable hands. Not only that, but I want to thank all the department heads for everything, you know, and all employees in general for everything we went through in order to get, you know, Alexa on board. So I want to thank everyone for that. And then we've got note pass through, I think, from Oliver Beebe. Hate to, sad to announce, but I've got a note that Jay Patel's passed away this evening. And I just want to say my condolences out to Patel family.